All right, I am going to call this meeting to order. This is our last meeting of the year as the Hamilton County Commission, it's a staff meeting, December 22nd, 2020. We've got a lot of items where we just need to kind of finish out and clean some things up here. But before we get to that, first of all, happy holidays to everyone, both on the call with us and then our guests, the panelists. We've got an item number four. We've got some resolutions and proclamations. And with your deference, commissioners, I would prefer to do those first. So we've got a number of them and we're going to take turns here in presenting these. So the first one, Commissioner Summer Udumas, you have, I believe it's for Alice Pavey.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam President. I saw Alice's face for a minute. I'd like to kind of look at her while I'm reading it. It's certainly my honor to be able to present this proclamation for Alice. And I'll just move on with it. I was trying to summarize the proclamation, but it's so good and it's so much. And you spent so much of your life doing this that I'm going to read the whole thing. So just bear with me. It's a proclamation honoring Alice Pavey for her 12 years of service to the Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services Department. Whereas Alice Pavey has devoted a lifetime of public service to thousands of people with disabilities, their families, and the professionals who support them. And whereas Ms. Pavey has worked since the age of 15 to increase opportunities for people with developmental disabilities, whether volunteering at summer camps, helping people relocate to institutions, to their communities, or supporting innovative solutions as superintendent of Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services. And whereas Ms. Pavey has been a perpetual advocate for others and a tireless supporter of self-advocacy for people with developmental disabilities. And whereas Ms. Pavey has served as superintendent of Hamilton County Developmental Disability Services for nine years. Whereas Ms. Pavey has championed employment initiatives, effectively implemented complex statewide service changes, and promoted remote support technology to increase independence for people that are served. And whereas, thanks to Ms. Pavey's leadership, people with developmental disabilities in Hamilton County can rely on an incredibly effective county board and access innovative, high-quality support. And whereas Ms. Pavey is retiring, oh, from a longtime career of service dedicated to people with developmental disabilities and their families, now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby recognize and thank Alice Pavey for her outstanding career of dedicated service to the citizens of Hamilton County and our region and her well in all of her future endeavors. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim the 30th day of December 2020 as Alice Pavey Day, and it is signed by all the commissioners. Congratulations.
Do you want to share a few words, Alice?
Well, first of all, I'm shocked. Thank you. It's so touching to me that you would recognize me in this role. But it's been a certain pleasure. This was a dream job of mine. It's something I always wanted to do. And I did it. And it's just so exciting to have this honor by you. Commissioner Udumas, thank you so much. Commissioner Dreehouse and Parks, you all have been so special to me. And I hope nothing but the best for all of you. And Jeff, thank you for everything that you have done as well. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alice. Thank you. All right. Now we're going to move on to our second. Commissioner Parks is doing this one. This one is for Bob Heidkamp. We're a little late with this one, but we definitely wanted to do the recognition.
Thank you so much, Mr. Heidkamp. I hope I'm saying that correctly, am I?
Yes.
Congratulations to you, and it is an honor to present this proclamation to you. So we start out, whereas Mr. Robert E. Heidkamp, Deputy County Surveyor, has provided dedicated service to the citizens of Hamilton County, the city of Cincinnati, and the townships, villages, and cities of Hamilton County, Ohio, for 45 years. So is he on here?
No, but Eric Beck is, the county engineer. I think he's accepting his behalf.
You're stepping in for him?
I am.
Okay. Okay, well, Mr. Heidkamp, so has he retired already?
He has.
Oh, he's gone. He's not messing with us anymore.
He's done with us, I think.
Okay, well, including working various roles within Hamilton County Engineers' Office for 22 years, working for 23 years as the Deputy County Surveyor. He retired November 30th. And so now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, that's us, does hereby recognize and thank Robert Heidkamp for his outstanding career of dedicated service to the citizens of Hamilton County and our region, and wishes him well in all of his future endeavors. And be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby proclaim the 23rd day of December, that's tomorrow, is Robert E. Heidkamp Day, in all of Hamilton County, by order of the Board of County Commissioners, Hamilton, Ohio, that's us.
Yep.
And it's signed by all three of us.
Thanks to Bob. Eric, I guess you'll make sure he gets that.
Yes, and I'm sure he will definitely appreciate that. He will be missed. He has been a big member of our office for a long time, dedicated a lot of service and to work with cages immensely, and he's also worked with professional land surveyors of Ohio quite a bit. So he will be missed in our office, and I appreciate you recognizing that.
Thank you, Eric. So it is such an interesting time because these folks that we're recognizing have been with the county for many, many years and done so much to serve the citizens. So we have one more. This person, however, is not leaving. They simply have received the recognition that we want to recognize because, you know, it's really important that we congratulate people when they are recognized statewide. So Tim McCartney, I know you're on. Could you please get on your video? I don't know why you thought you were attending the meeting today, but this is why we wanted you to attend the meeting today. I think it might be a little bit of a surprise. So Tim was recognized by the Ohio Jobs and Family Services Organization as the Outstanding Director of the Year here in 2020. What a distinction, what a great honor to you. Oh, there he is, holding the plaque. And so Tim has stepped into this role after Moira left and has done a fantastic job of, you know, moving the organization forward and really addressing the needs throughout the county during a pandemic, which is not the easiest thing to do because JFS, as we all know, is where the rubber hits the road for people in this county that need support, whether it's food support or support through the foster care system or cash payments or whatever it is. So Tim, congratulations on the recognition. I'm just going to read a couple paragraphs of this resolution and we'll get it to you. And then I'll let you say something. So it says, "Whereas each December, the Ohio Job and Family Services Directors Association recognizes a county Department of Job and Family Services director who through dedicated efforts throughout the span of their career exemplifies the professional qualities and achievements of an outstanding director. And whereas Director McCartney received numerous nominations from his peers for his outstanding leadership and was officially announced as the OJFSDA's 2020 Director of the Year recipient during their virtual membership meeting on Friday, December 11th. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County does hereby recognize and congratulate Tim McCartney as OJFSDA 2020 Outstanding Director of the Year Award recipient. And be it further proclaimed that we proclaim the 22nd day of December 2020 is Tim McCartney Day in all of Hamilton County." Congratulations, Tim.
Congratulations, Tim.
Well, Bridgette and Jeff are both liars. That was not why I was on. I even had somebody join. Thank you very, very, very much. That's very kind of you. And, you know, particularly in this year, you know, I have a great direct boss. I think you know that. Jeff is just a fantastic leader and his support and guidance have been just incredibly important to me. I have an incredible team of people over here. I wish I could give them all this award because they all deserve it. And, you know, 2020, if it has done nothing else, at least in Hamilton County, I think has demonstrated what public service is all about and why we all signed up for this, even though we didn't sign up for this. We really did. And your support, Commissioner Dreehouse, Commissioner Summer Udumas, and Commissioner Parks' support and allowing me to do this, you know, in this year is something I will never forget. I don't think any of us will. But it means a lot to me and I really appreciate you recognizing this today. That's very, very nice. So I appreciate it.
And Tim, I know you've got some team members on. So could they just wave the team members? There they are. Thank you all for joining. Commissioners, any comments?
Well, I just think that Tim is awesome. His staff, they just didn't miss a beat when Moira left. Any questions I had, any information I needed. And so just keep doing what you're doing in 2021. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, it's been such a pleasure to get to know you and to work with you. I've learned many things from you and I appreciate your patience and your openness. So good luck to you and congratulations.
Thank you.
He's not leaving, so. Commissioner Parks is leaving, so there. So Tim, thanks again. You know, my first, as the pandemic began back in, I guess, March, April, I remember calling you and saying, hey, I've got a woman out in Delhi, Rose Sturzen, her sewing, wants to sew masks for kids. Can you help, you know, distribute this to foster kids? And the answer, of course, was yes, yes, yes. And I remember dropping that box, a huge box. The masks were adorable. We took them out. Every foster kid in Hamilton County got a mask from JFS. And every time we have come to you, particularly through this crisis, and say, hey, you know, Tim, can you help? The answer is always yes. And that is the beauty of the work that you do, the work your team does. And this is recognition well deserved, I think. So thank you so much. Jeff, do you want to say something? Since you got Tim on the call through a lie?
Yeah, I guess, I guess, just to, first of all, say, Tim, it was all Bridgette. I had nothing to do with it. But no, just very briefly, just to say, I just can't say how much I appreciate all the work that Tim has done. Tim, and I know that Tim would be the first to say, and his entire team as well, because he's just got such an amazing team over at JFS. But whenever someone is put into an interim role, it's always just so difficult for many reasons. I say that as someone who's been in an interim role myself. And, you know, the mantra is typically that, well, you're interim, but you're either doing the job or you're not. And so, you know, there's really no such thing as an interim. But I can say that, but there's, the world is filled with so many people who just see it as, well, I'm just interim, I'm going to be a caretaker, I'm just going to buy the bridge from one end to the other. Tim has not been like that at all. I mean, Tim has approached this role with as much passion and dedication and excitement and fervor for the work that Job and Family Services covers as would someone who was taking this job with the expectation that he or she was going to be there for the next 20 years. And, as the board knows, the importance of this position in Job and Family Services demands nothing less than that. So I just can't thank Tim enough for when he was placed into this role. And he and I talked about, and Tim told me what his approach would be to it. But he has filled every single word that he said that he, early on, and I thank him for that. He's someone that I look up to and that I know the rest of the county staff looks up to also. I really do thank the board for honoring him today. No one could be more deserving. So, Tim, thank you.
Thank you very, that's very kind. And Commissioner Dreehouse, I still have one of the masks. My team will tell you that I should have abandoned this one long ago. But I just love it so much and because it's special because of where it came from. And it was the first mask that I got. So I keep it around. And even when we get through this and there is a mask burning somewhere, I'm going to keep this one.
Yeah. You have a sentimental attachment. And it's up to, Rose Sturzen or Sewing Circle did all of them. I still have mine too, Tim. So what I have in my coat pocket, because it's my favorite.
Yeah.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you all for joining. And Tim, again, congratulations on the recognition.
Thank you very much.
You can jump off now, there's nothing more for you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we do have one more. And this one is a little sentimental for me and a little bittersweet because it's for Victoria Parks. So Victoria, I'm not going to read through this, you can read it. But obviously Commissioner Summer Udumas and I wanted to recognize your service and the fact that this is your last meeting of your career here for now at the Board of County Commissioners. And so we wanted to recognize you with this. And just say to you, while you came in at a very interesting time, and I know you were very dedicated to the legacy of Commissioner Fortun and felt very deeply about your carrying that forward, the imprint that you have made, both in that role, but also in your own right with the work especially that you've done related to racism in this community and trying to move us forward in a really productive way and start that conversation in the county has been very, very important. And I feel that that is also your legacy and a very important legacy that will continue on after you leave. So we have been most grateful that you were willing to serve in this capacity. And it has been a genuine pleasure to have you at our sides as we've moved through this year of many, many challenges. And you've always been there, you are doing the work, and I personally am so grateful and excited for you and your future come the events of next year and beyond. So I know you're not leaving public service, but because you are leaving the commission, we just wanted to say goodbye with a little bit of flair. And last whereas clause, be it proclaimed that we, Commissioner Summer Udumas and myself, do hereby proclaim the 31st day of December 2020 as Victoria Parks Day.
I have a day.
Yes. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Summer Udumas.
Certainly. Thank you, Madam President. Commissioner Parks, you came in on a mission. You had a goal, and your goal primarily was to fulfill the vision that Commissioner Fortun had. And you did that. And you not only did it, you did it with your flair, your flavor. You made sure that items that he was strong about were not forgotten. And then you added on, as the president was saying, you added on those areas as it relates to racism. You added more to that foundation. So you did what you set out to do. And so for that, I congratulate you and look forward to your continued political involvement.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Parks?
Boy, you guys surprised me. Thank you so much. I'm excited and I'm also emotional at this point. I sincerely appreciate the proclamation. It's so kind of you. This has been one of the weirdest years of my life. You know, starting out with losing Todd. You know, when I think back to this time last year, you know, I was afraid. And, you know, and for Todd to select me to fit his giant shoes was just such an honor. And I do not mind admitting that I was terrified. But because of the solidarity and the true friendships and the relationships of the county staff, I really felt the warm wishes that everybody had, the way that you helped me grow. And just thank you so much. Thank you. I truly appreciate it. And the other thing, I had one thing as a goal coming in here, and that was to fulfill Todd's agenda. And that is what I measure success by. I pray that I have. And then we had the opportunity to address racism. I mean, think about this, right? In summer, we lost such leaders, George Floyd. You know, we all watched in quarantine in horror as his life was snuffed away. And because of the makeup and the heart that this county has, you guys walked side by side with me and helped me figure out a thoughtful and productive manner in which to address this, where everybody can participate. And I'm just so proud of it. And I'm just grateful to you all. And I hope that you know that I truly mean that from my heart. So I'm going to be quiet because I'm choking up. But God bless you all and I'll be watching you and, you know, like I'll call you up. Don't do that or do this.
That's right. Well, you should be proud of your service, Commissioner, because it's really been one year of tremendous impact, I think. And we'll miss you and your staff. Tell Sonya we said hey as well. But, you know, more to come from you. Right?
Yeah, buddy.
Yeah, that's right. All right. So now that we've gotten disposed of the fun stuff, we will move into our agenda. So item number one is the HCDC Quarterly Report. And we've asked them also to comment to the SEDS report that we all received. Hello, Harry. Harry's on, and I believe Pat's on and Catherine's on, to talk about this. But Harry had asked for some input regarding the SEDS report, and I thought it might be timely to bring that in as well, just to, you know, have a little bit of an overview. So with that, I don't know who I'm turning it over to, but I see all three of you lit up on the screen.
All right.
Oh, and Liz Bloom's here as well. Very good.
Yes, yes. Just want to say thank you. Hello, Commissioner Dreehouse, Commissioner Sumro Dumas, and Commissioner Parks. And Commissioner Parks, Bravo. Thank you for a wonderful year. And I know you've done many other years of service, but I know that your, I guess it's commissionership comes to an end here shortly.
Thank you, Pat.
2020 was an intriguing and challenging year for COVID, due to COVID involving economic development. In front of you, I'm kind of holding up what the document looks like, is our quarterly report. Harry, Catherine, and I will take turns going over the activities and results from the past quarter and also some things that are on an annualized basis. And we'll also introduce you to a couple of excellent projects and companies located in Hamilton County. I'll start out with the Business Center. You know, you were making lots of proclamations. Well, we'll make a proclamation that in October, we were notified that we were the best incubator in Ohio, by Ohio Magazine.
Oh, awesome.
We're very excited about that. We actually, the two finalists, there's a very fine incubator up in Youngstown, and then there's a kind of a super incubator up by Columbus at Ohio State. So I think this on top of our international award we won last year kind of matches that we continue to do the good things for our technology and innovative companies here in Hamilton County. We currently have about 45 companies, and they generated about $14.5 million in revenue this year, and they gathered about $6.3 million in capital. This was a tough year. If I were to tell you a year ago, we were at 90% occupancy, and right now we're at 65% occupancy. So, you know, it was not easy. It was pretty tough sledding this year. So, but those that have persevered are continuing to persevere, and we are continuing to coach and program and mentor those folks so that they continue to grow. And you're going to get to hear a little bit, I'll talk in a little bit, because we're going to do some rotation about a company called Subterra AI, which I think you will find fascinating here in a couple of moments. On our loan side, we had our best funding year in our 37 years of existence. We funded 42 loans for nearly $30 million worth of financing, and that'll probably be projects upward of $100 million worth of projects. You know, and I would say probably close to 50% of those are within Hamilton County's borders, because you do know that we do have some lending authority throughout the state of Ohio and the state of Kentucky, but our main focus here is still Hamilton County. But since COVID started back in March, we have seen 32 new companies get approved for almost $27 million worth of small business fundings. And 18 of those fit a SBA public policy goal of assisting a minority business, a women-owned business, or a business located in a rural marketplace. And if I'm going to toot our horn a little bit, we were also named the Certified Development Company of the Year in Ohio by the SBA Columbus District Office. So not only is our incubator doing really well, but our lending program is doing very, very well. And you're going to get to hear about one of our local borrowers, a company by the name of Pig Candy Barbecue, that I believe is located in California, Ohio. So that's going to be, you know, something you'll get to hear about in a little bit. But I guess the final point I wanted to do is kind of just, my opening remarks is the idea of collaboration. The CARES Act Small Business Relief Grant Program is a perfect example of collaboration. Obviously, within the county, I want to say a thank you to Jeff and Holly and Bridgette without their help, plus, you know, the team at Community Development. Without that team, that group, I don't think this gets going and doesn't do as well as it did. But I also want to add another layer of collaboration, and that's the results of the Minority Business Collaborative. We really wanted to make sure that this hit all corners of Hamilton County and was very, very diverse. And Harry's going to give you the results, but I think it's fantastic. We want to give kind of a thank you shout out to the African American Chamber, the Hispanic Chamber, the Urban League, Greater Cincinnati Micro Enterprise Initiative, the Minority Business Accelerator, and a whole host of chambers, from the Greater Cincinnati Chamber to the Anderson Chamber, to the Forest Park Chamber, all of All of these helped us get the word out and we touched almost 900 businesses who may not all have gotten these grants, but we did touch. And I will also let you know that we probably, between 100 and 150, we really had to do some serious handholding and coaching and mentoring. And I appreciate not just HCDC and its team, but our comrades out there and those names of entities that I just mentioned. But I also wanted to do kind of an individual shout out to two people I think did just a stellar job, and that's Bridget Doherty, you know, who's the Communication Director and our own Trish Sofakis. You know, they really spearheaded the communication program. And I think that their effort was just tremendous. And they really mobilized kind of an army of individuals to get out there to let people know that this grant program existed. And I think the results are going to speak for themselves because these are the companies that really needed help. So, but now I'd like to hand it off to Harry to do the next step of the presentation.
Thanks, Pat. And if it's okay, Bridget, I'm going to share my screen. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this was the original purpose of our being on the agenda is the quarterly report that HCDC puts out obviously every quarter. And Pat just went through some of the information that is on this first page. But I just wanted to hit the metrics. These are some of the benchmarks that we have every year to show our success. And I will point out that these benchmarks are only up until October 1st. So in the next report that will come next year, we'll give the full year's metrics. But as far as jobs and investment, you can see we've hit the jobs target already even before the year was over. And the investment goal is getting close. And I think it'll get much closer as the year is reported next year. The business retention meetings, it looks really low, but actually there was just a big dump of meetings that went into the Salesforce database. So that will get it closer to 100% as well by the end of the year. And then finally, as Pat mentioned before, our incubator, while it had a tough year, some of our clients did really well in getting financing and assistance through their business coaches to get financing to grow their small entrepreneurial businesses. I'm going to turn it over, unless there's questions about that. I'll turn it over to Catherine to talk about the next couple of items.
Thank you, Harry, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Just to go over a few program highlights in economic development, we did start to provide additional economic development services to the city of Norwood starting August 1st. I can tell you, I'm actually working on that contract and we are busy. Norwood is hot, not only residentially, but also with commercial development. Probably the largest project, and I'm sure you've all read about it, is Factory 52. It's a 21 acre property on Beach Street, the former U.S. playing card site that's actually been vacant since 2009. The proposed project is actually $100 million mixed use development with new residential units, restaurants, retail outlets, and really will be a destination, not only for the city of Norwood, but also for Hamilton County and the region. They do anticipate starting construction mid-2021. And later offices, later phases, excuse me, will include office, residential, and additional retail. So very exciting project. And then another one that I just wanted to highlight very, very quickly is the Montgomery Road Corridor Plan. The city received a mini planning grant from Hamilton.
So I assume she's frozen on everyone's.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm sure she'll be back soon, but if she doesn't come back, we can move on. But I might give her a few minutes. Or a few seconds.
I was going to say, Harry, if you want to start the OIC, we can catch up.
Sure, we can come back to this. So next on the report, we wanted to make you aware of our, you know, our Office of Innovation and Creativity that the county funds. And one of our highlights for this year was a company called Best Upon Request. That's owned by Tilly Hidalgo Lima. And I can increase this a little bit if people are trying to read it. And Best Upon Request is a concierge service that uses technology to help employers provide services to their employees to try to make their lives a little bit easier. It's a really good tool for retaining employees and for attracting employees because it's a benefit that a lot of people don't get at other employers. And Best Upon Request is a minority women owned business as well. As I mentioned, Tilly Hidalgo Lima is the owner. And they do a great job. And they also are certified with the Minority Woman Business Enterprise and Corporate Plus Member of the National Minority Supplier Development Council. So they were one of our Office of Innovation companies that we just wanted to highlight. And we thank you for your support of that program. Is Catherine back yet or should I go on to the next one? I guess we'll go on until we hear from Catherine. Pat, this is yours.
Sure. So an interesting company, the gentleman who founded Subterra AI is a gentleman by the name of Robert Lee, who comes to us from Down Under. He's from Australia. And actually participated in a local accelerator called Pipeline H2O, which is something that the city of Hamilton up in Butler County does. But when he's, after he won their award, came to us to help him implement. And yes, I'm going to read a little bit here, but you know, what Subterra AI does and why it's so amazing. They utilize advances in robotics, computer vision, cloud technology, and artificial intelligence to be an emerging leader in the subterranean infrastructure intelligence. He goes into pipes. This company goes into the MSDs of the world and checks out and sends a machine where we usually send humans. So they make it much more safe. And actually, with the technology they have, they can map out the system and look for problems and take pictures, you know, in the dark and allow those things to do. And oh, by the way, it is tetherless. There is no cable, there's no cord. So it can swim upstream, it can swim downstream, it can get into the muck. You know, so this thing is truly an amazing kind of technology. And they do have kind of a pilot program going on with MSD right now. So how has HCDC helped? Well, we have helped connect them with MSD. We've helped them connect with some local capital providers. And right now they're working with the Queen City Angels on a hopeful next round of capital. So we're really helping them prepare their plan, how they want to attack the marketplace, and then how they want to fund themselves so that they can grow. They're about a two to three person operation right now. But we're hoping by midsummer, you know, in 2021, that they will probably be somewhere in the seven to eight employee range with the thumbs up that things are going to go very, very well. But this is a, this is a cool company that's really leveraged startup Cincy. Obviously, they were up in Butler County. They've leveraged us, they've leveraged Main Street Ventures for some grant funding. We also want to help them go after what they call small business innovative research grants with the federal government that brings new dollars in. So this is a very, very neat kind of entity that, hey, we got them from Australia via Butler County, but now they're going to be setting up shop and doing business here in Hamilton County and hopefully be doing things nation, if not worldwide here in probably the next three to five years.
Thanks, Pat. Our final company that we wanted to highlight is Pig Candy Barbecue. Pig Candy is a women owned business that was started by Christina Garrig and her partner, Paul Montgomery. It is located in the California neighborhood of the city of Cincinnati over by Lankan Airport. And they call it Pig Candy because their specialty, their signature dish is a waffle that is infused with pork and maple syrup. And it sounds really good. I haven't had one yet. But they received a loan through the 504 Loan Program. As Pat mentioned, we had a historic year. They took advantage of those historically low interest rates. And they're going to be opening hopefully in March of 2021 and creating 20 to 25 jobs. And we're just really proud of that project and the great people that run that company. I don't know if Catherine came back or not. But if not, I think we'll end the quarterly report unless there are questions from the Commissioners before we go to the SEDS.
No, just, it's always exciting. It's great, great projects.
Thank you. So I will now, let me see if I can close this.
With this Catherine.
My apologies, my computer did not seem to like the microphone, so it crashed twice. So I have to uncleanse computer. Just to wrap up some of my comments, Steve Johns headed up the mini planning grant, Montgomery Road Corridor Plan, and did a fantastic job. And a lot of momentum is already underway, particularly from City Hall to Victory Park. They received a COVID-19 grant for outdoor seating for Heritage Park. Pike Street Cafe is open. I don't know if folks are familiar with Ventura Commons, the old Fidelity building. I just toured that last week. It looks amazing. So CDK Global has a new head there. And the good news is they, he did state that they're planning to bring folks back into the office post pandemic. And then the relocation of ProLink staffing. So a lot, a lot going on there, which is great. And then finally, Harry, did you go over the inclusion grants?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so basically, Jobs Ohio offered inclusion grants provided for, to financially support eligible projects either in distressed areas or business owners by underrepresented populations. And the first grant in southwest Ohio, which we're highlighting, Bezy Corporation, basically hits both of those, both distressed area and underrepresented population. It's just a really exciting innovation that they had in response to COVID. It's a high temperature portable steam device called Santa Zap. Really, really interesting. They don't use chemicals. It's really heat based to get rid of viruses and bacteria and those kinds of things. They're actually adding 15 jobs. And the parent company, MHI, has founded in 1995, has a long relationship with HCDC, graduated from the Business Center, actually leveraged an HCDC loan to purchase their facility in Woodlawn. So really, really great project. And we're very fortunate to have it in Hamilton County. Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine. So I will go back to sharing my screen and bring up, if you would allow me to, Commissioners, I'll give you an update on a small business grant program. I have to find it. Can everyone see that?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay, let me put, hit share with the screen again. Can you see that?
There you go.
So as you probably know, we just finished round two of the Small Business Grant Program. And we just wanted to give you an update on the statistics of that. We funded 581 businesses for over $5 million worth of funding through the CARES Act. Of those, 98% were companies that had 10 or fewer employees. 5% were veteran owned. 48.8% were women owned. 48.4% were minority owned. And then 168 were both minority and women owned. And then the breakdown of the minority groups, I think you all requested after the first round, 91, almost 92% of those businesses were African American owned. And then 5% were Hispanic. And then you can see that there were some other smaller groups that had different ethnicities or minority groupings. So just to finalize the totals of, sorry, to finalize the totals of, why can I not get through there? Oh, I got to hit my screen. So then the final of both rounds, one and round two of the Small Business Grant Program, we funded almost 800 businesses for about $6.7 million. So we appreciate your giving the confidence for us to run that program on behalf of the county. There were a lot of very small businesses that benefited from it, and I think it was a great program. So thank you for your support of that. And then finally, we will talk about the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. I'm going to jump out of this after I go through this really quickly. And first, I wanted to just introduce the team. As you probably know, in the past, we've worked closely with two different entities. One is the Community Building Institute. So Liz Bloom is here with us today. And she's going to be going over the process and the input from citizens and others. We also have Steve Johns with Planning and Development. Planning and Development was very instrumental in doing a lot of the research and the existing conditions and the writing of the document. So Steve's going to give us an overview of that. And then Clint McIntosh from HCDC here as well. And so Clint and I were the ones who represented HCDC on the team. So I'm going to first just tell you what the purpose of the SEDS is, and then I'll turn it over to Steve. But the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy is something that came out of the Federal Economic Development Administration. And it serves two purposes. One is it's a blueprint and a guide and a strategy for Hamilton County for the next five years on our economic development and the way that we deliver those services and those programs. And so this will inform ourselves and others who are trying to promote economic development in Hamilton County, such as the Port Authority and Ready Cincinnati, about that, about what the citizens and the community and the county wants us to do in terms of economic development. The second purpose of the SEDS is a very specific purpose. The Federal Economic Development Administration requires a SEDS to be approved by the county for entities to receive grants from EDA. So if, let's say, the city of Cincinnati or another entity wanted to apply for an EDA grant, they have to go to EDA to apply for that. But they also have to include a letter of support from the county that states that their grant is consistent with our SEDS or Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. So that's a very specific use of the SEDS. And so we always take that into account when we're designing the SEDS to make sure that it's broad enough that all of the different activities that are going to go on in the Hamilton County can be supported and that we can write a letter of support to EDA to support those projects. If there are any questions there, I'll turn it over to Steve to talk about the process a little bit more.
Thanks, Harry. It was a pleasure working with HCDC and Community Building Institute on this project. Good afternoon, Commissioners, and happy holidays to you. Have to say that one thing is that a lot of this work was done in 2019 for this project. So some of the data that we had collected is a bit stale now. And obviously, with COVID times impacting a lot of the, not necessarily population data, but definitely economic development data, we will probably need to do a refresh on that at some point. And a lot of the data that you see in the report is more from the 2018, 2019 era. A couple of the highlights that we look at when we're doing our demographic analysis are on population. As you know, Hamilton County has turned, bent the curve, so to speak. We had for decades been losing population and now we're back swinging up to gaining population modestly in the 2010 to 2017 period that we looked at. But a lot of new households. That's another trend that we've been seeing is that there's more and more one person households, smaller households. So that's often a good, better trend to look at than straight up population. That if we've got more households, that means there's more demand for housing and the housing industry needs to match that. So we had about a 3% gain in households over that period of 2010 to 2017. Jobs, we've also had a healthy increase in jobs. The last time we did the SEDS, I think it was back in 2015 or so, 2014. And we had just gotten out of the recession, really. We had started to see recovery, but we didn't get down to the very low unemployment rates we were having right before COVID. We were seeing unemployment rates in the low 4%, and which really set us apart from some of our competing counties. Cuyahoga and Montgomery County, surely, we're not doing quite as good as we were. Franklin County continues to be the leader in the state of Ohio. The big thing that jumped out at us from the economic development perspective is that the places where we're growing more jobs, particularly healthcare, food service, business and finance, education and training, and computer math, three of those big buckets, healthcare, food service, and educational training are generally lower income jobs. You might imagine a physician assistant or somebody whom healthcare aid, they're not making a ton of money as compared to someone who might have been in manufacturing. Manufacturing continues to be the place where we see jobs slowly losing more and more jobs. It's a small percentage, but it's important to say that that's where, you know, the middle class was born and bred. And by shifting to different sectors, we're seeing more people in lower income situations and less people in that middle class section. So that really informed a big chunk. So that really informed a big chunk of what our recommendations were about. How do we deal with that? And, you know, that spilled over into a variety of other things outside the SEDs, including the housing work that Community Building Institute and LISC have been doing. So that's a quick overview of what we saw. I'm going to turn it over to Liz to talk more about the process and the input she heard from the community.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thanks. Thanks very much for having me today. I too have to say, I really enjoy working as a team with the great county staff and the great HCDC staff. It really makes it enjoyable. So the process we used this time, similar to last time, was that we did a number of informant interviews with economic development folks in the communities, HCTC, Ready, the port. We also interviewed folks in small political jurisdictions. Dan Pillow from Addison, Mayor Smith from Silverton, all throughout the community. So and we also interviewed business leaders, large and small, institutional leaders, University of Cincinnati, lots of folks in healthcare. Healthcare, as several folks have said, the fascinating industry was fascinating before COVID, even more now, driving a lot of real estate activity, driving a lot of employment activity. It's a huge sector in our economy. And so the income behind the interviews is really to take the temperature of what I would call the economic development infrastructure and sort of environment in the county. If I could use one word to sum up the interviews of the thought leaders, it was talent. In 2019, people were very interested in growing talent that came both from folks at institutions like University of Cincinnati, but also from OKI and from the airport and from hospitals. And so there was this real need to both support people who live in this community so that they get the kind of education and training that everybody needs. I'm going to quote Pat because I thought it was really great to embrace the sort of engineering, technology geekdom of, that is, Hamilton County. And we needed to train workforce who knows how to do that. And those are the kind of jobs that are going to support families long-term. So there was lots of conversation about talent. I will tell you, in addition to doing one-on-one interviews with thought leaders, we also did two rounds of public meetings that included, they were open to the public, so interested citizens were there. There aren't as many interested citizens in the details of economic development strategies, you might imagine. There were a lot of local ED professionals, local village and city managers, all those sort of folks. And I will say the thing, though, I think the course correction that we heard from them when we presented the first set of recommendations or the frame was that as we talk about talent, we also have to be talking about pre-K through 12 education. And there are lots of efforts to connect early childhood and pre-K and high school students to employment and job opportunities and thinking about what that looks like, we need to keep at that. That was an important piece of what we heard. And pre-COVID, the other thing that we heard from a lot of, I would say, folks in the field that we didn't do one-on-ones with, was that that work is changing. People are working from home. People are Zooming. I mean, I don't even think I knew what Zoom meant until April. But there was a lot of conversation about how the workforce is changing and how people work is changing. And I think that is only more true today. I think, as Steve said, much of our work was pre-COVID, but in some ways, it was sort of prophetic. We were talking about education. We were talking about equity. There was a lot of conversation about supporting communities. I do this all the time in North Central Hamilton County, sort of between the 74 and 71 corridors, where there are a lot of small political jurisdictions who have lots of underused real estate that needs to be redeveloped, and we need to figure out how to help support them to do that. And so there's a fair amount of conversation about that.
I remember, this is sparking my memory, like, the idea of place being important still. And so the planner in me wouldn't want to let that go without trying to mention that that is that tie to talent, right?
And I would say, right, there was a real convergence in that conversation, right? We used to think that creating wonderful places was the icing on the cake. And what we're finding is that it becomes much more fundamental economic development strategy than it used to be. Quality place is what attracts talent, as Steve just said. It's what holds us here. And it becomes the resource that political jurisdictions can provide to those who are building an economy. So I could go on, but I will not. If there are, I'm going to go back to Harry and say, if there are any questions, we can certainly talk in more detail about any of the recommendations that are suggested.
Liz, if you don't mind, one other thing, we're calling it as we're having this conversation, is this idea of, were we going to be resilient when the shoe fell? And we knew that something was going to happen out there. Like, it had been over 10 years since the recession, Great Recession. So and our feeling was, no, that we didn't have that core strength from economic development perspective. I think we're shown the core strength of our people through this crisis, but that our sense was that maybe our core economic strength hadn't fully recovered since 2009.
That's right. And that had a lot to do with race and inequity and poverty. While the job numbers looked good, one of the things that we saw from a trend was that about the middle of the last decade, the trend line, I mean, employment and, I'm sorry, you're seeing my fingers. That's not very effective. Employment and poverty tend to work together. And about the middle of this decade, they broke apart. So poverty is getting higher while unemployment is low. What that means is people are working at very low-wage jobs, which is what Steve and Harry suggested. That, I think people, I think thought leaders all through the county realized that that was our vulnerability, and it certainly is proving to be so and is worse now than it was at the beginning of the year, certainly.
And I'll just add, another theme was that, I think Liz kind of talked about this, is that our first suburban communities, some of our more struggling communities need more help and assistance. And I think the county should be congratulated for including in there some more money to do site development and to do the Community Revitalization Fund. I think those will be really important tools to help the first suburban communities with the redevelopment of their areas. And it will impact some of those populations that are underserved or that are having a harder time finding jobs. So I appreciate everyone's kind of input there, Commissioners. We don't want to take too much of your time, but the next steps, we will open up for your questions in a second. But just so you know, the next steps, we are open to your comments on the drafts. We sent you the drafts of the full report, as well as the executive summary, which is a shorter 10-page document that we can distribute to anyone who wants to see the overall recommendations. And so if you have any comments, let us know. And we'll also send this out to the Port Authority and Ready Cincinnati to get their input. And just so you know, they were interviewed at the beginning. They're also invited to the public session. So they've already given us input. But because they are part of the group that delivers the services of economic development on behalf of the county, we want to give them another chance to kind of weigh in on the strategy. And then we will come back to you early next year with the final version for your consideration. And it will be a meeting, a public meeting, but also we'll allow 30 days for more public input on the final document. So we'd like to open it up for your questions if you have any.
Well, thank you. Thank you all. Very comprehensive report. And thanks to Harry, you mentioned the Small Business Assistance Program through the CARES Act. And you guys, we couldn't have done it without you. So thank you so much. So many businesses were helped. And we did hit the mark. We intended to get very small businesses, especially minority-owned, involved. And that's exactly what you did. So very, very grateful for that. I just want to say broadly that I've reviewed the report and the summary. I don't have any comments at this time, other than to say, I think it's good to know that we're on the same page related to the trajectory, I think, of the county. We know that there are people struggling. We know that people are working, but they're working low-wage jobs. And that's the nut, right, that's going to be difficult to crack. We have, in our most recent budget, allocated some dollars to housing, to a workforce or a work group that will come up with a strategy. And we've earmarked $1 million against the reserve in the case that there's something to do then this year. And then I expect we'll build on that in the future. So it sounds like we're all rowing in the same direction. And with your help, you know, people are finding opportunities in Hamilton County to start their own businesses, but also to get good-paying jobs and, you know, live in a quality life here in Hamilton County. So I really, really appreciate all the work from all of you. And I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Summer O'Dumas.
Thank you, Madam President. Just an outstanding report. I read through it. I don't have any comments right now. I will read through it again. I am just so impressed with the small business grants. And that's what President Dreehouse just spoke about. But for you guys to have that second round and the few people that reviewed it and tweaked it to see how we can include more businesses, just the difference from the first round, as far as the monies that were given out, the amount of businesses is astronomical. And so I can only thank you so much. Just a fantastic job done with those small businesses. Really happy about it. Thank you.
So this is an example of when I say that the Brain Trust went into the think tank. You guys, you guys were the think tank. And the way that you executed and just accomplished our goals is just awesome. And I'm so proud of their program. It was done quickly. You guys had to be on your toes, you know, working together with, I think about Holly and Bridget and Jeff and Denise's ideas and Commissioner Summer O'Dumas, you know, the way that we came together. And I think it was just, it was creative. It was smart. And I think that we hit the bullseye, the bullseye with that. So, thank you. And I do, what I was thinking, you know, the gains in the service jobs that pay the low wages, it looks like that is what is growing. You know, Cincinnati used to be a manufacturing mecca. And, you know, and I know that we've lost quite a bit of that. But, you know, I remember years, I don't know, maybe six, seven years ago, there were some programs to get women into clean manufacturing. You know, it looked like that there was a campaign to drive people toward manufacturing. And so my question is, is it that there are manufacturing jobs and not enough people apply? Or are the manufacturing jobs just gone?
It's hard to sum up quickly, but I would say that there are manufacturing jobs out there. And I just had a business retention meeting with one of our manufacturers today. And a lot of the jobs go unfilled because they have certain requirements and skill sets that are hard to find. And so training and workforce programs are really important in that regard.
Like what, Harry?
Like what?
Yeah, like what? Like what kind of requirements?
Well, some of them require more computer skills and, you know, just some of the, I think that there's been a shift, and that's, we've seen that, that older folks who don't have the skills that younger people have with computers and things of that nature. But it's really hard to sum up in a blanket way, Commissioner Parks, because different employers have different needs. And I can't give you an overview of everything and what every problem is, but I just know that that's some of the problems that we're hearing from some of the manufacturers. I know that in our SEDs process, a lot of the input was about alternative sources of workforce. So even people with autism, minorities, other folks that are trying to find jobs, that there need to be more programs to try to help these people get into the workforce. So, yeah, if you look at the report, you'll see that in there, there are some suggestions of some of the different programs that we could be doing. But I think it's not just a Hamline County problem. It is across the whole country. Manufacturing is becoming less and less of the economy of most urban counties. Service jobs are becoming more and more of what people are doing, but they don't pay as well. They don't pay the benefits that people are looking for. So, you know, anything that we can do to continue to increase our manufacturing or other innovative, new types of businesses that are more of the future economy, I think that, you know, that's kind of what the Office of Innovation is about. So I don't know if that answers your question.
I would say the trades are something that we kept bumping into as well, that plumbers and carpenters and folks that have to be skilled, but it's not in a manufacturing environment. That's something that, you know, just anecdotally, you hear that those are tough jobs and that they're tough to get into and to learn. And it takes years to become proficient in them. And folks just don't, evidently, there's a challenge getting people to want to invest that time to get where they need to be in those professions. Liz, you might be able to speak to that.
So a few years ago, the apprenticeship program was put into place for a lot of those jobs. And I'm wondering, and the effort was to try to increase the amount of people that were skilled to have those jobs. And I'm wondering if it actually did the opposite, where people were not able to qualify for those high requirements and it reduced the workforce. I'm just making an observation.
So I'm going to fill in a little bit with the work that we've been doing on housing as well. I think that what Steve says and Harry says is exactly right. The construction sector, one of the sectors of the economy that did not recover very well after the last recession was construction. So many of those small-to-middle-sized companies went out of business. And so now getting that whole system back up in a way that will produce the kind of housing numbers we need to produce in Hamilton County is a challenge, but it's an opportunity to create jobs in small businesses for young people who want to learn those trades. One of the things that we hear, both in the advanced manufacturing, which is STEM skills that Harry is describing, and in construction and trades, which is what Steve is describing, is those jobs don't necessarily require a college education. And we've done a good job, maybe too good of a job, of encouraging everyone to go to college. And we need to make better use of STEM skill training and trades training. And those are very good jobs, and they pay a living wage. So I think it's, again, it's about education and talent and growing our own workforce from within Hamilton County.
I see. Thank you.
All right. Very good.
If I could just say one last thing. Commissioner Parks, it's been a pleasure working with you, not only this past year, but when you were Commissioner Fortunes, Chief of Staff. And we hope to cross paths with you in the future. And just, all three Commissioners, have a wonderful holiday. And thank you for your support of our organization.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. We'll see you in January.
Yes.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Same to you guys.
All right, just a reminder of how much work there is to do, right? Okay, item number two is related to the CARES Act. And as both of you know, we did get the extension through the federal legislation, which is great news. More challenging news is that we didn't get any additional money. But we're hoping that there will be another relief package towards the beginning of next year. But for now, we at least have that extension to work with, and that's tremendously helpful. So in light of that, there is, you know, we have to have a plan moving forward for the dollars that remain. And so Jeff and I think Holly wanted to provide an update related to the beginnings of that strategy and, you know, what we should expect here.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. And just real quickly to tee it up, as you said, we did get the extension. So we have until now December 31 of 2021 to utilize the CARES Act dollars that were initially allocated. So that's fantastic news. That's going to allow us to, number one, continue to operate our testing program, our Test and Protect program that we are funding through the Health Collaborative, which already to date has allowed over 30,000 people to get tested out in the field, which is just great news. It's a seminal component of being able to respond to the virus is being able to adequately test for it and then do all the contact tracing, et cetera. So having the ability to continue that program in next year is crucial. And I'm grateful, as I know the board is, to everyone in our legislative delegation who heard that from us and impressed that message to their colleagues in DC, as well as to some of the professional associations like NACO, et cetera, who reached out and continued to press that message as well. So we will So we will be able to continue our testing program. We will also be able to be a little bit more strategic about how we utilize the remaining dollars. Holly and I were talking this morning and yesterday about the idea that this will give us a bit more time as these programs wrap up towards December 30. All of the multitude of programs that we have, as all of them wrap up, and even get some bills paid into early January, we will be able to much more accurately account for how much money is actually remaining, so that we can then be a little bit more thoughtful and strategic about coming back to the Board, probably in late January, sometime in February, with a recommendation on how to program the dollars that are remaining, in concert with some of the other work that is going to be done at the federal and state level. So the second round of the stimulus allocated dollars to a whole host of purposes, everything from vaccine distribution to small business assistance, to rental and utility assistance, to schools, transit authorities, COVID response to vulnerable communities. All of these programs are going to be going out, many of them are going to be hitting the states. And we can expect that the state, state of Ohio will be implementing some programming on its own. And I think it, it probably bodes well for us to take a moment, best understand how the state is going to be leveraging its dollars so that we can figure out how to most strategically utilize the remaining dollars that we have. So not only does the extension allow us to continue some programs, it also allows us to think a little bit more strategically about how we use the dollars that we do have remaining. We know that there are needs. We know that there continue to be needs in rental assistance, small business assistance, food security. We've got the vaccine out now. And so any dollars that may be necessary to help facilitate the supply chain with the vaccine, a whole host of things that we have where we know dollars will be needed. But making sure those dollars are most effectively spent, I think, is going to be critical. So, and so what I would suggest and recommend to the Board is that we take a little bit of time in January and early February to allow the administration to come up with that plan and provide it to the Board at that time. Holly, is there anything that you want to add into this in terms of the strategy moving forward?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm sorry, my video is not working for some reason. But it's good to see you all. No, I have nothing to add, Jeff. I think you, there we go. I think you covered that really well. And I just want to, if you don't mind, just take a moment to thank the Commissioners, as well as Administrator Aludo for their guidance over this past year with these CARES Act dollars. I think it's, it's going to be really nice to have some time to be a little more strategic, to make sure we can, we can potentially, as Jeff mentioned, fill in the gaps to where maybe the federal and state can take care of a lot of issues. Maybe we can take the time to look at where those gaps need to be filled locally.
Yeah, agreed. It's a great approach. And that's kind of what we were trying to do, actually, with the first round, with the small business in particular. For those that didn't get the PPP from the feds, you know, we tried to fill in the gap there for the much smaller businesses. So I think it's a smart approach. Can you help us better understand the dollar amounts here? I mean, I know we had 18 million that we had allocated for testing, and I assume that much of that will remain as we go into the next year. So what is the amount of money that has fallen to the bottom that we're talking about, perhaps repurposing come next year?
You are correct.
No, I was just going to say, I think we're still calculating that down to the nickel. But Holly, you want to give, as much as we know right now, I think the testing, we have a much better understanding of, but some of the others, we're still, we're still calculating the remaining pool. What are, what's your estimate right now?
That's, that's correct. The testing program, we had a contract for 18.2 million. And we, we do anticipate, you know, extending that contract into next year to continue that vital program. I will say, we, we were looking at the remaining balances over the past month in terms of what we expected wouldn't be spent by the end of December 30. So those, those numbers will be changing with this extension, because we can extend some of those programs into 2021. So I don't want to back myself into a corner with a number, but I would, I would say initially, we were looking at right around, I think it was 7 million. But we'll come back with a more refined number, as Jeff said, in the next few to several weeks.
Okay. Is one of the programs that we hope to continue with the money that we had already allocated, the rent assistance program?
So yes, we, we have sent out extension letters in anticipation of an extension. So any, so that the timing of those agreements have been extended, but the dollars have not been yet increased. Because as Administrator Aludo mentioned, we want to make sure to see what, what the federal government, because they do have rental assistance in there, will be providing as well as the state.
Yep. Smart. Okay. Any questions or comments?
Just one comment, Madam President. My, I guess my two priorities is the one that everybody has, is to make sure we don't send any money back, of course, that the money is spent. Now we have more time to be more strategic. But secondarily, is not to overwhelm our staff that are reviewing every, the rental assistance, the small business and all. And I'm not sure, and I'm sure, I'm sure Jeff, you'll be looking into that, but just trying to do all of that. And you, God, you guys did such a great job. But where are the gaps? Not with us necessarily, but even the agencies that we use to facilitate some of that money, to look strategically, were there any bottlenecks or any gaps? And not to overwhelm our little small group of people. So that's one. I know you've been looking at that, Jeff, and, and I keep hearing Holly and Bridget and Jeff and Holly.
The question is a great one. The issue of capacity, Commissioner, is an excellent topic. And I would say that, as it relates to finishing off the, this round that we have, additional 12 million, or the 12 million for testing, the additional five, however we wind up going about programming that, I think is something that we feel internally we can take on and do that. To the degree, though, that we do get another round of stimulus, and they're already talking about another round of state and local government dollars. Now whether that actually can get approved through a divided Congress is anybody's guess. But assuming that it does, the question is very well taken. And I think that Holly and I will be talking about what we might want to do to bring on some additional staff to implement any kind of a next round or next slug of dollars that we get. Because this, for Holly, for Bridget, and for others on, on their team, this was all they were doing. And it just completely, and, and I say that in recognition of the fact that, you know, Holly's still got a million other things accomplished this year, not the least of which was helping to coordinate a lot of things on the county's behalf as it relates to MSD, and some other major projects that we're working on. So I just don't, I echo your concern, Commissioner, that another round of this implemented in the exact same way, I think will really stress, I think we just have to look at some other implementation model, doing that to the degree that we do get another round.
Thanks.
So I'd like to vote on Holly getting in assisted. But I won't be here. Other than that, what I was thinking, so with this extension, that means that organizations like CAA can use the money that they sent back.
So we have, we have a couple of contracts with CAA. We have the rental assistance, which is, like I mentioned, we are extending that, the term. And we also have, as you may recall, an agreement with CAA for the rapid reemployment program. That was a new program brought on by CAA, given what they were hearing from the rental assistance program. And that program, we are extending as well. Same dollar amount, but the term will be extended, given the extension by Congress.
Yeah. So now they can do it. Okay.
They can, they can now utilize those dollars that otherwise we would have had to find a different way to employ or that we would have to extend back. Correct?
Yeah. Sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to talk about Holly's assistance.
Oh, okay. Well, I talked to Neil Tillo yesterday about the rental assistance, and how it was going, and some things I had heard. But five, two of the five people that he has assigned to that task are COVID positive right now. So that really limited their ability to be able to move as quickly as, and so we have to be, of course, we are aware of, even though they have people assigned in whatever agency, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. Yeah.
So on, before we jump off the COVID topic, we got our first doses of vaccine in Hamilton County today through public health. And they are going out today and tomorrow to first responders throughout the county. So yay for us. And they're being stored right now in the county facility that we set up with the freezers. So we are on our way to vaccinating this community, and that's very, very good news. So Greg mentioned that earlier today. So I just wanted to let everybody know. He's celebrating for sure. So, so we'll hear then, Jeff, from yourself and Holly, and as you said, January, February, related to these dollars and what the approach will be.
Correct. That is correct. And Commissioners, before we leave the CARES Act and COVID topic today, there are a couple of items actually for approval. I think under the item, and I'm not multitasking on my screen here, so Holly or Court Panio, confirm wrong, but I think under CARES Act, we were going to talk about 2021 strategy and also approval of administrators' actions. So as an attachment to the agenda, there was a, an action sheet that you normally get for administrator actions. But these are all of the items that I had been provided authority to sign off individually on the Board's behalf. And we just want to make sure that those are entered into the record before the end of the year, because that was the, initially, 1230 was the deadline. And while that deadline has been extended, we just want to have some belt and suspenders on here and just make sure that we enter all of these into the record of the Board before the close of the year. So we would recommend the Board approving that action report of the administration.
I'm going to move that we approve of the action report and receive it for the record.
Second.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. And the next item, I believe, is item number three on your agenda. And I'm, I'm sorry, President Drehouse, I was moving on to number three, unless you wanted to move, unless you wanted any additional discussion.
No, no, and I'm finished messing around with the agenda. Other than to say, and you mentioned it, big thank you to Senators Brown and Portman, in particular, and the entire delegation for helping us with this extension. So with that, let's move on to item number three.
Item number three is, in our original CARES Act plan, there was 35 million that was devoted for county public safety purposes. These would go towards eligible payroll expenses or payroll expenses of eligible public safety representatives within Hamilton County, sheriffs, corrections officers, patrol, 911, et cetera, to the degree that their jobs were substantially devoted to COVID-19. So this has always been a component of our CARES Act plan. This passage of this resolution just formally authorizes the administration to make that accounting transfer of the CARES Act dollars to the public safety payroll.
Any questions, Commissioners?
I have no questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Going to move that we approve of Resolution Number 35, authorizing the use of coronavirus and relief and economic security for public safety payroll expenses.
Second.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Thank you. We have disposed of item number four. Item number five is a resolution related to the newest Commissioner, Alicia Reese, coming in at the beginning of next year. And as always, we need to approve of her staff coming in so that they get paid on time. So we have to do this at our last meeting of the year. So this is a resolution appointing Edgar Malcolm in the office of the Board of County Commissioners. Any questions related to this item, Commissioners?
I have no questions.
No questions.
Jeff, did I miss anything?
No, you did not.
All right. Very good. I'm going to move then that we approve of the resolution appointing Edgar Malcolm in the office of the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
All right. Item number six is about an MSD agreement out in Whitewater Township. And I see that Director Christie is with us, and Holly and Karen. So I don't know who's going to take the lead on this one, but please, please go ahead.
I think Diana, Director Christie was going to, to lead on this.
Sure. I think I'm on. Okay. Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. An agreement between the Commissioners and Whitewater Township Regional Sewer District. This stems from an earlier, it's called an interdistrict development agreement, or an interdistrict agreement, or an IDA that the county entered into with Whitewater Township over a decade ago, I believe. And projects were completed in Whitewater Township. And MSD reviews those for their technical merits and approves them as MSD sewer projects, but they're completed by Whitewater Township. This project in particular was approved by in 2011 for design, and it has been slowly progressing on and off. This agreement that you're approving today is solely for the purposes of the design work that the Whitewater Township engineering firm, the Whitewater Township engineer has been doing for this sewer project. This will allow MSD to pay Whitewater Township. And then we are going to come back to the Board with an agreement for the completion and construction of this project at a future date.
Okay. Any questions?
No questions.
We are going to proceed. I'm not sure Commissioner.
No questions.
There she is. All right. Very good. Thank you, Diana, for elaborating on that. I'm going to move that we approve of the resolution approving and adopting an agreement between and among the Whitewater Township Sewer District and the Board of County Commissioners, authorizing the county administrator to execute said agreement on behalf of Hamilton County and do all things necessary and proper to carry out its intent.
Second.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Happy holidays, Diana. Thank you. You too. I love you.
Happy holidays. Yeah.
All right. We're down to item number seven, a resolution related to the transient occupancy tax. Jeff, I assume you're going to lead this one?
I will. Holly can jump in if I miss on anything here. But this is really a cleanup issue related to the 2018 residual account made available in 2019. As the Board might recall, initially, the city of Cincinnati was going to, was going to use its residual dollars, starting at a certain point for payment of debt services associated with public infrastructure costs related to the FC Cincinnati Stadium. I think the actual debt issuance on that did not occur precisely the time that was anticipated. So the residual balance for the city that the trustee made available of the occupancy taxes would not go towards debt service for that particular year, but instead would go towards what had been its prior use, and that was a split between the CVB marketing and promotion of the Convention Center, as well as maintenance of the Duke Energy Convention Center. So I believe in this particular case, the city would be using around $455,000 of that residual balance for the, to go towards the CVB, and around $985,000 to go towards operation and maintenance and repair of the Duke Energy Convention Center. This doesn't necessarily affect the county's side, but typically when we do, when we authorize uses for occupancy tax, because there is an agreement between the county and the city, the county and the city both approve it. So this gives the city the authority to use its occupancy tax residual in that particular way. Holly, did I miss anything on that?
No, I couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you.
All right.
There you go.
My praise. Thank you, Holly.
All right. Commissioners, any questions?
No questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Going to move that we approve of the resolution approving agreement for the use of county and city residual transient occupancy funds.
Second.
Ms. Drehouse?
Yes.
Ms. Summer O'Dumas?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
All right. Well, that completes our agenda. Jeff, do we have anything else in front of us?
No, nothing else unless Holly or John. No, no, nothing else unless, uh, um, Holly or, or John, Bridget, am I missing anything that we need to wrap up before the end of the year here?
Yeah, this is it, my friends.
I was going to make a joke, but I don't think I will. No, I, I think we've hit everything.
Yeah, John, I don't even want to see John's face.
I'm always not making a joke. I'm not going to make one either. I have one thing.
Yes.
Full day.
I know. How about that?
Football, baby.
That was crazy.
It was. It was great, man. I couldn't believe it.
Yeah.
I, I, I forgot the game was on. And then I remembered and I watched and boy, we won.
Yeah, that's right.
Good to see.
It was good. All right. Well, Commissioner Parks, we're going to miss you. So thank you again for, for all that you've done for this commission. You're, you've been just fun to work with. Um, so good luck. Yay. And happy holidays to everyone.
Happy holidays, everybody.